Hey guys, what's going on? My name is Lysaphar111 and welcome back to another episode of Persona 3. This is episode 75, 100% this time, 75. Did I screw it up in the last episode? I dunno. 100% this time, 75 though, don't worry. Alright, uh, so this, uh, last episode, we basically did the same thing we've been doing in the last few episodes. We haven't done much combat-related stuff lately. I mean, obviously, I finished off the, um, the Anna Tartarus. Uh, but this episod- the past few episodes hasn't been combat-related at all, so I dunno if we're gonna make it. We probably aren't gonna do the, um, the, uh, the full moon boss, but I'm gonna try and go as far as we can in that. Um, so try and do up to, uh, eight epis- uh, eight days here. So, I dunno if it'll be too long, but whatever, we'll see. Okay, now that that's all sorted out, let's go talk to Fuka. Yes, can I help you? Uh, what are you doing? Uh, how old are the rooftop planters doing? I dunno much about gardening, but I'm kinda curious. Uh, yeah, sure. Okay, let's head to the rooftop then.
(sigh) So this is what it's like growing plants. Oh, should we be measuring the pH of the soil or monitoring how much sunlight they're getting?
You seem really into this. We don't need to go that far. PH? You seem really into this.
Oh, um, yes, I looked up a bunch of stuff online. I thought it might be helpful. I do like flowers and stuff, but I've never really worked with them outside of arrangements. I've always wanted to try putting in the work to grow some, though. Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to go on about myself like that. Shall we keep working for a bit more? I'll go get some water.
Okay. I tended the rooftop plants with Fuka.
This looks good.
Thanks to the care we put in, it looks like this will be a big harvest.
Do you think you could invite me when you tend the plants again? I'll do more research, so I'm at a better position to help out next time, too.
I dunno why this is all of a sudden my job, like, you're just like, "Oh, here it is, on the roof." "Oh, by the way, this is 100% your responsibility, motherfucker."
It's me. Sorry for interrupting, but do you have a moment to talk?
Uh, be right there. Who the fuck do you want?
Good morning. The chairman is visiting again tonight. When the time comes, let's all meet up in the command room. I'll see you then.
Why couldn't you have sent me an email? Summer vacation will be over soon, the film festival's almost over. Maybe she invites someone to go to the dorm with me? Nooo! Because fucking Mamoru Hayase wants to meet! Hell yeah! Oh, Teo Game, I was actually gonna do some shopping. You wanna take along? My little bro's been begging me to pick up some new tunes for him, but I dunno how much about music. I could really use your help. Okay. Oh, great. There's a music store up in this Palonia Mall, right? You mind going back? I'm gonna finish working out first, shouldn't take long. I've been waiting for a while, but Hayase still isn't here. Let's see. I'll look around for him. "Hug my heart," that would... I would have to do some surgery first before I did that. He's not in any of the nearby shops. Hmm. Guess I'll go kill some time. Hayase still isn't here. Well, uh, I'm just gonna go home. Fuck this.
Hello? Sorry, but I don't think I can make it today.
Uh, well, what happened? Don't worry, it's okay.
I just feel bad since I'm the one who wanted to hang out. But actually, my mom fainted. I'm at the hospital right now.
Shit.
They said it's exhaustion, since she works from morning till night. Damn it! It's all my fault! And my mom, she's trying to leave. She says we can't afford the medical bills. God damn it! Why can't I do anything? I'm useless. Just another one of her problems. I'm sorry about all that. I... I don't wanna be a problem for you, too. And I'm glad you were the one to hear me out. Talking about this kinda helped.
Hayase is going through some awful times. He opened up to me about it, and I feel like we're closer now. Six! Alright. Damn, that sucks, though.
I gotta get back to our room, so let's talk later, okay?
Not his dad, and then all of a sudden his mom had to pass out, too. It's getting late, so I'll go back to the dorm. Well, hopefully she gets better soon.
Good to see everyone's here. Alright, come on in.
Excuse me, I hope I'm not interrupting.
Huh? Amata-kun?
No way.
Based on our testing results, we've confirmed he has more than enough potential.
Nice!
So I decided to call this meeting to introduce him to the rest of the squad.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, he's only in elementary school. And besides...
Besides, what? We've already confirmed he has the potential. With training, he should be a valuable asset to the team.
Did he say he was okay with this?
Actually, it was my idea to join. I feel like I can help, too. And I think I finally understand why I have this power.
Hmm?
As you can see, it was his own decision.
Looking forward to working with you. I'll-
Oh, my bad, sorry.
I look forward to working with you as well.
Glad to have you on board. Don't push yourself, okay?
Thank you. I'm hoping to learn a lot.
Hey, don't worry, kid. We got your back. It might get tough, but you gotta work hard and stick with it.
Understood.
Yet another new ally has joined. Ken Amata, he seems very level-headed for an elementary school student. As a team leader, I need to give him proper support. I wanted to see what level he was at, 'cause, uh, let's see... Most of the time, we're equipped. No, wait, stats here. So Ken, level 37, so he's lower than... he's higher than these guys, but lower than me, so I'd say we're about at the right level, then. You're on the second floor to talk about... what's up?
Fantastic.
I'm very impressed with the Amata-kun. He's quite brave for his age. I used to be a real scaredy cat when I was in elementary school. I'd run crying if a bee ever came near me.
In that case...
He seems very determined. Normally, I think he would be a great addition to Sees. His age worries me, though. We'll need to keep a close eye on him. Yeah, for real. I will be joining Sees as of today. I promise to do my best, okay?
Well done.
If you ask me, it's just like the Akutsuki-san said. Amata has a strong will. Even if he's just a kid, I guess determination is the real deal. Yeah, damn right.
Um... Oh, hi!
Junpei-kun and Amata-kun look like brothers, don't they? Because Junpei-kun is the silly older brother, and Amata-kun is the reliable younger brother.
Oh, no, no!
Hey, now, don't you mean they're super cool, reliable, older brother? But having a kid brother doesn't sound so bad. You think I could get to call him Big Bro?
Jeez.
Why is Junpei trying to act so hard to act like a senpai? Well, since he's not in any clubs, I guess this is his first chance to actually be a senpai.
Oh, yeah!
Going to be a battle his age, Amata. Man, if he stays with me, I'll show him how it's done. He can call me Junpei Senpai.
Jeez.
Stop acting like a little kid. Amata-kun's more mature than you are.
Oh.
I've heard from Amata-san earlier that the spear is his weapon of choice. Ah, that's what kinda curveball when you think about standard weapons like swords. I wonder why he chose that?
I speculate.
Most likely because of his size. A spear makes up for any disadvantage he might have against a taller element. Ah, that makes sense. I'm not surprised that Amata-kun would think of that. Yeah. Let's take a look to see if there's any frickin' recordings. I-I just checked it, so probably not, but... No harm in trying to figure it out. There are no new recordings, okay, good. Because I know that I never frickin' get that on time. And I always go the... and I always forget completely. And I'm like, "Oh, hey, let's check to see if there are recordings." Anyway, I'll be right back. Alright, I guess let's just go to bed. I'm back, guys. Not that you even perceived any difference, because I just had the power of editing.
Good morning, this is Elizabeth.
No.
I am calling to report you that more humans have wandered into Tartarus. One this time, I believe. Goodbye now.
Motherfucker. Well, they just hurried the hell up, man, I swear, dude. What is the point of that, man?
Uh, it's almost the start of the second semester already. And pretty soon, I'm gonna be a third year. And time goes by way too fast. Oh, it's her. And she's drawing again, huh?
You again?
Oh, well, uh, actually, I'm surprised you remember me.
I could say the same about you.
I mean, your outfit is pretty memorable. So, uh, what are you working on?
A drawing. Why?
Uh, no real reason, I guess. I just thought it's pretty awesome to have something you're passionate about.
It's nothing like that. I'm just drawing because I feel like it.
Fair enough.
Oh, huh. I still wanna see you when you're done, if you don't mind.
Summer vacation will be over soon, the film festival's almost over. Yeah, 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 yeah. Emergency! Dear Konor-chan, come swing by the shop and say hello, will ya? I might. Mamoru isn't available, I imagine. Yeah, 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 so we'll go to him. Then tomorrow, we'll have to talk to the sick old man, because, uh, we got his fucking fountain pen, yep. Eh, well, whatever. Must've chosen the wrong option last time.
I wonder.
Don't you think so, Konor-chan? Oh, you. I can feel my bond with gross spawners. I spend a relationship with gross stronger soon. Good. It's almost dark, decide to go back to the dorm.
Welcome back.
Greetings. One week remains until the next full moon. Additionally, the Lost are increasing in number. I recommend to continue to assess the situation for any potential irregularities. The wait is over! I don't care about the wait. Hey, is there anything you could think of that I'm super into? I dunno, that's for you to discover. Yeah, you're right. I'll have to figure it out on my own. That's the truth. One more week until the next full moon, the situation remains unpredictable. Please begin making careful preparations now, while I make sure to check on my parts as well. Uh, let's just talk? Souna-senpai's been acting a little strange lately, don't you think? Maybe it's difficult for him to watch Amata-kun put himself in danger. Despite appearances, I think that deep down inside, Souna-senpai is actually a really kind person. Yes. Just wondering, does everyone do in my weapon training? I should practice on my own and get the hang of fighting better, shouldn't I? Okay, I'll start then. Alright. Junpei's being weird again. He's going on to something that he's super into. Maybe just for one day, he should be super into getting his homework done. Good idea. Ah, about Amata. Would you mind looking after him for me? Uh, sure. Good, I'm counting on you. You have owed me one. You owe me like 10 at this time, after you said that, like... Can I help you? Uh, let's just go to Tartarus, Soudori. Ain't nothing going on here, and I'm like, "We'll see what Ken is all about if we, uh, get into fight with the shadow."
Um, excuse me. Will you please add me as a member in today's search party? I wanna participate in lots of battles and get used to handling my persona.
Okay, come with me.
Alright! I hope I can prove myself useful to all of you.
Oh, yes!
Connor, may I have a moment of your time? Tartarus appears to have a special little guest today. And between its jaws, this clenches a fragment that emits a curious blue light. Should your curiosity get the best of you, perhaps it is best to pay a guest a visit. I believe it'll likely be on floor 88. Well, off you go.
Marvelous!
I can sense the power growing within you. Yeah, ba-ba-bah. Okay, uh, I'm missing persons. I sense someone, there seems to be human presence between this 106 and 111. It would be best to search the tower and locate him as soon as possible. It seems a little guest with feline, curious, and mute ordered their way to floor 88. Do keep that in mind as you explore.
Very well.
Alright, let's take a look at this shit here. Uh, so... Stats, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, get rid of you, 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 you. We're taking you, obviously. 35, 35, so you're in like the lowest levels. Okay. I'm getting a faint reading of a person. It could be the people who get lost in here. It's too far for me to pinpoint their location. It seems they must be at a higher floor. Oh, I can't go down? I have to go all the way up from here to fucking level 88? What a waste of time. I'm getting a faint reading of a person. It seems they're much higher floor. Yeah, 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 yeah. Shut your bitch ass up. Okay, I'll be back once I, uh, once I get there. Oh, we got a rare one up here. Let me... let's take my time to actually try and fight this thing. Finally worth my time.
That one's special! Take it down if you can!
I didn't know... okay, so we, we don't know what it's like. Ice is probably gonna be one of those stupid weird ones, but that seems to be right, fine, okay.
Wind isn't good on this one. You'll have to try something else.
Alright. Where's my... oh, this is what, oh, yeah. Let's try, let's try one of these. Okay, block that one. Hmm, I don't wanna kill it just yet, but whatever. That's fine, I get to test this anyway. Okay, blocked that one. Eh, that wasn't really worth it, but at least Akihiko leveled up, and I did, too. Now I'm level 42. And we got a strong one. Oh, there's a cat, right there. Let's find out what this feline presence is all about. I'm getting a faint reading of a living thing. It could be a person. Please try looking for him. Uh, faint signal, we need to find him. Faint signal, yeah. There's a cat! I dunno what the hell is up, but Elizabeth seems to have mentioned it, so I dunno. Could be important. Hey, go kitty cat. This cat looks like it's scowling. Hell, there's a kitty in a place like this? Anyway, we need to protect it. Please come back to the entrance to menu. Ask for an escort. In that case, please stand by while I escort. I'll go. Let's hold on for a little longer. Apologies for the delay. I'll make sure this cat is escorted back safely. The cat offered me something that's holding its mouth. It's a bit damp, maybe I can use it. Three Twilight Fragments, uh, that's why. That's why Elizabeth's saying, "Don't worry, we'll keep the kitty safe at the entrance, so you decide to leave for the night, so keep exploring if you want." Yeah, that's what I want. So I'll go up those steps, and we're gonna take the, uh, teleporter to floor 106, I think? 105, probably, I dunno. Yeah, 105, an enemy. There's a person nearby, I miss the ones missing people, from 109, okay. Let's get up there. Oh, hell yeah, dude. Nice, alright. We needed that. We needed that like crazy right now. My team members are... Okay, let's figure out who's, who we're gonna bring up. Let's try this again. Who should I think of? Uh, let's just go, yeah, Souna up 6. Uh, Junpei up 7. That's a good idea. Oh, were you kidding me? Okay, fine. Oh, I can just resume from that floor, I forgot. About to be pissed off. Okay, here we go. Found the missing person. I'm getting ready for that person, please go scare them right away. Alright, I'm sure there's someone else. Check everywhere, please. Okay, well, I'm just gonna find it. Ooh, there's a rare enemy right there, epic. Oh, get him out. I was just gonna go pick a fight with the random shadow, but... So now they should all level up. Okay, uh, I'm just gonna go for, uh, Ken on this one, because he's got that. Oh, no, he doesn't. Fuck, that's the wrong one. Damn it. Well, let's see what that one is, I guess. Yeah, nice it up, okay. Alright, where's, uh, where's my... oh, there you are. That was an Amarakie. I gave this persona that Amarakie's abilities. Nice, High Priestess. 6, 2, and then there you go, level 42. Fire Break, uh, negate resistance, fired, uh, raises one ally's defense, that's a good one. Uh, Vacuum slash Torn Shot Bash, Medium, Weak Strike Damage to 1, okay. See that, dude. Blade of Fury, what's this? Weak slash damage to all foes. Weak slash damage to all foes, 2 to 4 hits. This one's, this one seems a little bit better than that one, so we'll do that. Shift, I'm just not sure what that is. Gigantic Feasties, Heavy to 1. Weak Strike Damage to 1 for low chances of minimally distressed. Allows one foe's attack for 3 turns, that's a good idea. Negate, electric damage, shock boost, uh, Mazio, Zaiyunga, electric boost, shock boost, yeah, no, I'm sure of that, alright. Maziyunga, medium electric, so instead of Mazio, replace that. Good, shi. Alright, good use of the clock there. And I guess we'll just pick a fight with this guy, too. Finally, Ken can show off his battle prowess here. There we go. That must be one of the people who went missing. We need to provide treatment immediately. Please return to the entrance as soon as you can. Yes, that's what we're doing, eh? Okay, welcome back. It looks like you're able to rescue a missing person. We can have him stay here for now, we'll see you properly. Uh, try another search for not picking up anyone else's presence, okay? Beautiful. Oh, is there something I can assist you with? Uh, I guess we'll check up, I dunno. This one's already done. Alright, never mind. Alright, let's go through here. Let's go ahead and register these ones, 'cause we already... So we got some new personas today. Uh, I dunno if I'm gonna keep them or what, but we'll see. Got a new Hanged Man, so I'm probably not gonna keep that one, 'cause I already got that. Well, let's see, persona here. So we got Levers for Queen Mab, and our other one was, um, Narcissus. So, yeah, we, we don't really need that, so I'm gonna get rid of this one, then. And we'll just use Queen Mab from now on, and then Orthrus, which is Hanged Man. Uh, Raging Tiger Agilow, I, I think we should probably keep that one, just in case. Um, but yeah, so now we have, now we got three more set up. And we got Queen Mab as well. Very good. Okay, guys, let's get the heck out of here. You wanna stop for tonight? Yes, let's call it quits.
Hi there.
Oh, and now Pharaoh's is back again.
I thought I'd remind you. There's only a week left until the next full moon. Are you ready? There are only a few trials left. So, make sure to be careful out there. I'll see you again sometime.
Dude, I already stayed up till midnight. I don't need people waking me up. The summer vacation will be over soon. Okay, sorry about that. No problem, bro. Don't gotta apologize to me, man. Oh, Sunday. Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, should I go for... nah, I'm almost done with them. This guy you can only do on Sunday. I dunno, I should probably do, prioritize this one on Sundays. Oh, that penny in your possession, by any chance, is that my missing fountain pen? Yes. Ah, welcome home, dear friend. Uh, thank you for finding it. Now the mighty scream quietly bellowing within me has regained its voice, my diary. My name is Akinari Kamiriki. Have a seat if you'd like, I'd write something for the two of us. Alright?
I remember you. You're the one who was playing with that elementary school girl. She was very bright, her face shone with the warm light of new life. And then there's me, cooped up in the hospital, struggling to breathe. I'm just a faint glimmer compared to her dazzling light. Misery is a harsh mistress. I feel as though I'm lying in an unyielding darkness. Do you understand how I feel?
Uh, I think I might. No, I can't.
I didn't think so. Any day now, I'm going to die. I have an incurable hereditary disease. Unless you're in my situation, you can't understand how I feel.
Exactly.
But I prefer it that way. I wouldn't wish this on anyone. There are no platitudes to stave off death. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to depress you or anything. It's been quite a while since I spoke to someone my own age. It's only natural for those dwelling in the depths of darkness to yearn for the light. I'm glad we could meet, though. If there is a god, I'll be able to thank him soon enough.
I've become acquainted with Akinari Kamiriki. This is the sun, right? Yeah, okay, this, this is the other one that I was talking about. I was like, "Yeah, the sun is a different one." Dying young man.
However, I doubt we will ever meet again. This was just a chance encounter, nothing more. Goodbye.
I will make it that way. I parted ways with Kamiriki, then headed to the dorm. It looks like you've been more than lately. You called him the Lost, right? I don't mean to be rash, but I like to put my power to good use. Alright, yes, the wait is over, dude. Let's talk. Souna-senpai's acting a little strange lately, don't you think? Maybe it's difficult for him to watch Amata-kun put himself in danger. Despite appearances, I think that deep down... Bro, I already said that. Uh, true my perspective, this job only we could do. Indeed, right. Alright. Piva, you've been saying this is like new stuff when it isn't. Do you intend to continue working the rooftop planters today? Uh, okay. I'm concerned with the vegetation, my inquire original care. Alright. Agus is giving the plants her full attention. I tended the plants with Agus.
Size doesn't matter, as long as they grow well.
Thanks to the care we put in, it looks like this will be a big harvest.
That should be enough for today. It's about time we head back.
Okay, sounds good to me. Get the fuck out of here.
Hey, antsy meeting you here, huh?
You're the one who keeps coming back.
I'm Junpei. What's your name? You from around here? Oh, not even listening, huh? Here's... Wait, whoa, your hand! What the hell happened? You're bleeding!
What's wrong with you? Can't you mind your own business?
Are you kidding? I can't just ignore that! Uh, it's gotta have something. Give me your hand. I can wrap it up with this handkerchief.
Why are you panicking?
Huh? Who wouldn't be freaking out right now? You gotta get to a doctor. Uh, do you want me to go with you?
You're a weird one. Chidori. My name. You asked, didn't you, Junpei? I'm almost finished with the drawing. I doubt you'll be able to understand it. But if you want to see it so badly, then you know where to find me.
Today's the last day of summer vacation, and the film festival ends today as well. Well, that's convenient, isn't it? Something for y'all. I ain't give a damn what you've got for me. You ain't gotta jack shit for me, fool. My Bob, Bob, hey, Teo Game, good, perfect time. If you wanna get something to eat, I can hear my purse cover crying sadly. Uh, well, whatever. Wonderful, my gourmet friend. I set forth our culinary adventure. I don't trust the plague. I know what he sounds like now, I should... You're not gonna eat that? You mind if I have it? I feel my brown was swimming, it grew stronger. Oh, yeah, cool. Not really prioritizing him right now, but I didn't have anything else to do today, so might as well. I didn't have anything else to do today, so might as well. Welcome back, the full moon will be... Autically prepared, yes, we are. I'll hang out with the doggy. Amata-san is small, so uses spear with long reach. This enables him to compensate for his small stature and fight bigger enemies. Indeed, a spear is a perfect weapon for Amata-san. I agree with that. School startups again tomorrow, as Junpei soon cut up his homework, doesn't seem like spacing out more often. Oh, my homework's all done, of course, I knocked it out all in July, that's just par for the course. Did Junpei finally give up on finishing his homework? He looks kinda out of it, I wonder if he's alright? Is he? Chidori, huh, all things considered, she's a bit of a weirdo. Who the hell are you talking about? I don't know who that person is at all, I haven't been spying on you, this whole friggin' time. Alright, um, let's go to the velvet room and find a, uh, see if we can... Do kinda like a star? And if we can't, then, uh, I will look at the fusion calendar, see if we can create one from what we've got in our compendium right now. Fusion, search, uh, still, yes, we don't have a star, oh, sun! Oh, the sun right there, that's actually what we need, okay. So Garulu and Nekashogen, so the moon and the star will make the sun. That actually makes sense. So Nekashogen and Garulu, we need to get back. Okay, yes, I am. I would love to, let's do... What do we got here? Rebellion? Regenerate one auto sukakaja sharps. Uh, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Let's do, I guess we'll do these. We got 1 net, 2... Good. I am Yagurasu. Can you sense my sacred red aura? If so, then I shall be the wigs that guide you. Alright, there you go, Yagurasu, uh, we got this, the sun for the other ones, and then the star, of course, for the other guy. Moon for Garulu, okay. And then, of course, the hanged Orthrus that we can get rid of if we don't need him anymore. Okay. Good, so now that we've got all the personas that we need, we started up a social link again. Uh, yeah, I'd say we're pretty good, let's go hang out with the doggy. Hey there, puppy doggy. The TV rolls to Kormaru's feet, Kormaru's looking at me with anticipation. Oh, he might get a new ability, not bad. Combat characteristic. The usual animal show, today is the last day of special on wolves. Kormaru seems to sympathize with the wolf's leader protecting the pack. He's giving me a look of fierce determination. We're all counting on you, keep up the great work, wanna be the leader now? We're all counting on you. Kormaru's focused even harder on the wolf's pack leader now. Compared to before, the look in Kormaru's eyes seems to have changed. As if he gained a sense of pride from the wolf's leader. Pound of Hades. Auto sugunda lowers accuracy evasion of 1 random foe for 3 turns when a battle starts. You look determined, we're not done just yet. Kormaru's looking sharp. Alright. That's nice. Combat characteristic, not a bad thing to unlock here. We watched the program in the end, I should return back to the dorm, or my room. Alright, first day back to school. 4 days till the full moon, boss, second semester begins today. I can hear people talking. Good morning, summer vacation is over, what a bummer, why does life suck? Haha, sounds like someone has apathy syndrome, well, wouldn't life be easier if you actually did? No, do I really? On second thought, you're right, it doesn't sound too bad, at least I would have to worry about anything. People are getting used to apathy syndrome, some people seem to think it's awful, while others think it's not so bad. The first bell has rung. Ding 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 ding. Alright, quiet down, summer vacation's over, you're back in school now, so act accordingly. You'll never get through the full textbook if you stay in vacation mode forever. So, okay, so let's review, TL game. Which property of electricity is relevant to superconductivity? Voltage, resistance, current? Uh, superconductivity, I'd say probably then. Still in vacation mode, are we? Yeah, I don't fucking know. Superconductors are material capable of the right temperature of reaching 0 electrical resistance, resistance is correct. As a result, electric currents can travel eternally through a superconductive circuit held at the proper temperature. Many years ago, I used this fact to confess my love to someone. My love for you is super conductive, I told him. Sure enough, my enthusiasm won her over and we started dating. But enthusiasm isn't very scientific, before too long, I'd lost interest in her. Alright, in the next section. I answered incorrectly. Yeah, I don't know, I'm not an electrical engineer, what you want from me? I'm a film student. That's ended for today. Kenji Tomochika, bebe greetings. Weird the type of that, I'm happy that Konodomo souls too. Thank you. So Yuko, we ended up doing that, and then, of course, Yukari as well, from the other time, but, uh, yeah. So I could go bebe, I could go, I don't know what I'd do, I... Should I, should I see if the, yeah, strip, well, I don't know. Yeah, I think we should probably max these old farts, because... I, I don't wanna need that. Old mother star, I feel like we'll grow closer to the elderly couple. Nice. So we could finally get rid of that stupid persona if we don't need it. Please, just wait a little longer, oh! Bokichi-san asleep talking, looks like he's taking a nap, takes a closer look.
Oh, you're here. You, you could've woken me up. Why didn't you just wanna admire my pretty face sleeping like a baby? Upside daisy. We recently closed the book on a difficult matter, so, I suppose the relief has put me at ease. It's the middle of the day, but I feel awfully sleepy.
What's the matter, why are you relieved?
While we're all here, I think it's time we told you. The truth is, we sent a letter to Gecko-Kan. We asked them to go ahead and cut the persimmon tree down.
Dang. But why?
Just the reaction I was hoping for. It was more than worth it to surprise you like that. Sorry for doing this without running it by you. When we went to visit the tree together, I met a school faculty member on my way back. He told me, the administration is planning to put up a new school building where the tree currently is. It would be selfish of an old man like me to deprive those young people of new learning opportunities. Helping children reach their potential is more important than clinging on to old memories. I think our son would agree. He was a teacher after all.
That's true.
Yes, we had a long talk about it, and this was the conclusion we came to.
You really set an example for young people, being so considerate to old folks like us. We pray with our sun in heaven that more kind souls like you will graduate from Gecko-Kan. Here, we'd like you to have this.
It's a shame we never got to see the new building in Persona 4, I would've liked to.
A little rough around the edges, just like our son. My dear was the one who suggested we give it to you.
Persimmon fruit. The me, it must be very, some, very special meaning to the both of them. Their deep gratitude reached my heart. Nice, fully! Ah, it's hyrophant! Perfect! Feel like we're maxing every, every social link in every episode, man. Hyrophant social link has reached its maximum level, you can now fuse Kohuru, the guardian of nature.
Now, we have to cheer up and get on with our lives. We're too old to waste a single day. If we kick the bucket while wasting our days away, I'm sure he'd laugh at us from heaven.
It's hard on the parents to have such a well-respected son. Oh my, does it sound like I'm boasting?
The 3 of us chatted until sunset. I parted with the elderly couple and went back to the dorm. That was a nice end, I'd say.
Oh, there he is.
Hey, what up? Hey, puppy puppy.
That does it for our first day back.
Well, you two have perfect timing.
Perfect timing? For what?
Hey, Fuka, is Agus ready?
Hey, abay!
Um, what do you think? This is how I look now.
Huh? Why's she wearing a school uniform? What's going on here?
She said she wanted to go to school with us, so I told the others as a joke. But the chairman actually agreed, so now she's gonna start as a second year tomorrow.
Seriously? He's down with that?
He said something about studying her behavior in a social environment.
Sounds like him alright, that's hardly the problem here, sounds like him alright.
Well, if he's cool with it, then, I guess it's alright. Besides, I'd say it looks pretty good on her. Maybe even... Cute?
The school camouflage that Fuka-san provided is more than appropriate.
It looks very natural on you, no one will suspect a thing. But, why do you wanna go to school? It's not like it's interesting.
As the second semester commences, I intend to synchronize my schedule with everyone for maximum efficiency. If I remain here on standby, it could affect our deployment efficiency. To accommodate, I requested reassignment alongside our squad leader.
Deployment efficiency, huh? Why do I feel like you being at school would make that even worse?
I will make any necessary adaptations as the situation evolves.
Uh, sure, you do that.
He says, I want to go to school too.
Ha, I don't think we can pull that off, huh?
Kormaru, no, you definitely have to stay here, okay?
No, I didn't, in Persona 5, where he brought our cat to school every friggin' day. Urgently seeking workers, fuck off. I have a question, Konodomo-san, why can't Kormaru-san attend school? I do not understand why am I permitted to go in Kormaru-san's school, while Kormaru-san is not? Cause he's a dog, it's common sense, I don't know. It is so difficult of a question that no answer can be given. Nowhere in the school regulations does it state that canines are prohibited for attending school. I didn't say that. I gave Agus some winter clothes to wear, so she's covered up, I hope that she won't be too hot in them.
Wait, seriously?
Dude, let's be real, she's seriously cute. I bet she'll be super popular, tons of guys are gonna have a crush on her. But what if someone finds out that she's, you know, cause of the way she talks, the way she walks? Ah, fair enough. I'd recommend Agus's attendance to the school to the chairman. Agus requested that she attend, and I couldn't think of any reason why she couldn't. The chairman agreed, so there you have it. When Agus-san wears a school uniform, she looks just like your average high school student. Yeah, except for her hands. Ah, heck, that, you know... If she wears a summer uniform, everyone will be able to see her mechanical arms, so we decided she would wear a winter uniform. Wearing this in summer is a little weird, but I don't think she's too must be a robot weird, right? I had nothing to do with this, alright, it was all mitsuru. If anything happens at school, I'm not gonna be held responsible. What is Akutsuki-san thinking? I don't know, that motherfucker's already freaking out. That's some bitch, he ain't know what he's doing. Venting machine, oh yeah, my fucking vending machine's all good now. Gimme all that. Alright, kinda go to bed. I think I actually can harvest now, right? Let me harvest now, actually. Before I forget and then they start wilting away. Alright. Again, they... Looks like the produce can be harvested. Nice. Should I plant something? Yeah, sure, why not? Spinach, we'll go. Plant the sold spinach root. It's pretty good. Yeah, Popeye, you know, I like spinach. Alright, let's go to sleep. Should I go to sleep early today? Yes, I should. I see, this must be Tartarus during the daytime. That's right, it's school right now. I see, I shall record that in my memory bank.
Class, we have another new transfer student joining us today. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name is Agus, I am pleased to meet you all.
Agus-san? I've never heard a name like that. Maybe she's a foreigner? Let's see, anything else I should know? Hmm? Humanoid tactical weapon?
What?
Clearly, that's a mistake, it just goes to show, you can't believe everything you read.
Yeah, you got that right!
Let's see, you can sit, um... Are there any open seats? Oh, there's a spot, right next to him. Okay, off you go.
Uh, Ms. Toriyumi? Someone already sits there, he just ditched today.
Which means he's not here, so now it's yours, alright, take your seat.
Wow, that's some logic there.
The spot is perfect, my highest priority is to be with him at all times.
Agus!
What is it?
Uh, Yukari, why do you stand up?
Uh, why? Ugh.
Good to see everyone's getting along so well, but, do me a favor and save the drama for after class?
Yeah, for real, Yukari.
Gimme a break.
What's your damn problem? Ambite, give a fuck about. Who the fuck is that? It's a message from Tsunada. I have something important to take care of after school, and I want you to come along, I'll be waiting for the front gate, meet me there. Don't tell me what to do? Motherfucker? You ain't my boss? Ah, yes, I gotta meet up with them.
There you are, I've got an errand I want you to help me with, let's go.
Alright, like where? I don't really want to, alright.
You're really starting to piss me off.
Things have changed, sorry, but I'm not taking no for an answer this time.
What?
This belongs to you. There's a new threat. Persona users just like us.
So? That's not my problem.
That's not everything. Amata has joined our team.
What the hell do you mean?
He has the potential, and Akutsuki-san approved it. He's a Persona user now.
I don't believe it. Tell me one more thing, was it his decision to join?
Yeah. He came to us.
I see. Then, I guess I'll stick around. So, you're in charge now, huh? I got a question for you. What are you fighting for?
To protect someone, for my own sake. I don't know.
I see, well, you do you, you gotta work together either way. My old room's still empty?
Yeah. Yet another new ally has joined, Tsunjiru Aragaki. He's a year older than me, and seems to have lived in the dorm before. Though shrouded in mystery, he seems to be a reliable partner. Nice.
Oh, welcome back.
Pretty cool, eh? Uh, no, fuck off, no, dude. Aragaki-san kicks ass, man, I'm never gonna forget what he did for us back at the alley. With him back on the team, ain't nothing gonna take us down. Aragaki-senpai is the guy who helped us out at that place, isn't he? And he used to be with Seas, huh, so we'll be fighting with him from now on. Oh, I didn't mean to sound like I have a problem with that, I know he's a good guy deep down. Damn right. Aragaki-senpai seems scary, I think he's just misunderstood. I doubt that he's a bad guy, I mean, he used to fight alongside Tsunada-senpai and Karisa-senpai. Yeah, exactly. He knows what he's doing. I didn't mean that. Aragaki-san seems very strong, but do you think he's trustworthy? I mean, he was hanging out at that kinda place. I just find it hard to trust people like him right off the bat. What did he do for us in that alley, I completely forgot. Konodomo-san, I'm glad you're here, are you available tonight? I borrowed a book about Yakuza from the library. I was searching for combat-related... I was searching for combat-related material in the library and suggested this. It seems to provide information on combat tactics as well as the proper mindset for battle. Okay.
You have my thanks.
You have my gratitude. Since the two of us will be reading from one book, please open it wide so that we may view both its contents.
Ah, here it is. In this scene, the main character says, "That ass better not crack under pressure." Usually, people's asses are already cracked. Yours is as well, right?
Obviously, that's a secret.
I understand. But please tell me someday. For now, I will put the question on hold. Currently, this is the only section that I am unclear on, but I suspect that if I continue reading, I will encounter even more confusing phrases. If you don't mind, could I ask you to read with me until the end? Thank you very much! With your help, I've been able to update my records with new information. Apparently, this book has a sequel. If it is possible, I would like to read with you again sometime.
I feel like my charm has increased after reading about the main character's righteous spirit.
It's gotten rather late. We should head back to our rooms. Or, should I say... Our turfs.
That's right! Better not be on my fucking land, I'll say and gun your ass down! Ba-ba-ba-ba! That's not what Yakuza do, do they? I dunno. Limit 2. Who the fuck?
Good morning!
No!
I am calling for support.
God fucking damn it! Fuck your goddamn, I don't give a goddamn anymore! Fuck that sumbitch, let him die! Good morning. A news report stated that a number of cases increases just before a full moon. It looks like there are more cases than last month, this is the highest I've ever been. Uh, I see. Something must be done. I don't know the reason for the increase, we'll just have to remain alert at all times. That's done it for today. Hey, what up? Rest easy, you and I will still be together at all times. She's still far from passing as human, doesn't look like she understands ordinary feelings and conversation yet. If she could, I might be able to form a bond with her. Oh, nice, Miyamoto. Uh, Kenji Tamatshiken and Yukari Takuba as well. I might start at Fuka. Let me look at Fuka. Uh, Fuka's usually over here, right? Yeah, I think she's like in this area? Potentially, so... I dunno. I also didn't even start hers out, but yeah, we'll go with Yukari today, she's the only... Only one I'm really focused on right now. Kenji and Kazushi already finished, so... Are you walking back by yourself or come with you? Yeah, right. Great, why don't we head somewhere fun? Oh, right, that's the place I wanted to check out. Help me pick out something nice, would you? Damn, the Lost, man!
Lilies are too fragrant. Roses aren't really my thing. Maybe... Gerberas? Oh, sorry! I'm redecorating my room and was thinking of getting some flowers to go with it. I think I'll go with the gerberas. What color do you think I should get?
Uh, cube pink, pure white, bright red. What's a gerbera? I dunno. Sounds like a pretty good, I mean, she usually gets the pink stuff, so probably that.
You think so? I like pink too!
Nah, I don't like it, but I just figured that's what you would like.
I guess... We have the same taste, huh? Then it's decided! I'll get these! Hmm... Come to think of it, gerberas by themselves might be a little plain. What other flowers do you think would look nice? Oh! Wait, you've never seen my room, have you? Well then, why am I even asking you?
That's mean, invite me over then! That's mean!
But it's the truth. To be honest, any flowers would be fine if they were from you.
Oh, come on, I was trying to avoid this shit! Cause I'm trying to go for Mitsuru. Well, whatever.
Just kidding!
Okay, good, thankfully. Yukari seems to be full of laughter today, I feel like we've grown closer. I tried to choose the options that weren't romance-able. Whatever.
Wow, look at the time! Gosh, what should I get? I'm actually a pretty indecisive person. A redonkulus wouldn't be bad either.
Redonkulus. After hanging out with Yukari, decided to return to the norm.
Ah, you're back.
Hey! I haven't introduced myself, have I? Name's Shinjiro Aragaki, I stayed here before. I won't bore you with all the details though. Anyway, long story short, I got your back. Um, there's gonna be a full moon the day after tomorrow. Sure, leather large shadow will appear, so make sure you're fully prepared. Yeah, I know, surely, okay, so... Uh, stats here, let me see here, so Shinjiro's heat level 39 as well. Ken's level 37. So next time, we should probably go for the lower, so 37. Ken and Koromaru, yeah, once, next time we get that clock thing, or whatever, have the party there? But I can set up, okay. Pretty good. Everyone is set, I got this level to 42, so that's good. Sounds like a good thing to do. Uh, let's just talk? Though I still don't know Aragaki-san all that well, but for some reason, I feel like I can depend on him. I guess because he's used to fighting shadows. I'll work harder too, so that I can support our team better. Yeah, good, good job! The full moon's close, make sure you got a plan of attack hammered out. If you're not set yet, you should really rely on Shinji for the time being. He's got a pretty strong arm, this guy. Huh? I don't listen to him, I'm nothing special. Where is he? Oh, he's right there. I guess I can hang out with him too. Alright, well, um, so... Let's talk to everybody and then I'm gonna go look online and see what level you need to be for that... Shadow. Did something happen between Yukari-san, Junpei-san and Aragaki-san? They seem to trust each other. I guess the two of them seen Aragaki-san as a good person.
My apologies.
I'd appreciate it if you didn't probe Aragaki about the past too much. Aragaki, Akihiko and I were all Sees when we were in middle school. A lot of things happened back then. But there's no need to doubt Aragaki, I assure you that he's reliable. Koromaru-san told me something interesting. He said that one named Aragaki has been feeding him from time to time. Oh, yeah? That's pretty cool. Little doggy. Okay, let me, uh, let me look this up. September 5th, yeah, Polonia Mall, recommended level 41+, so we're already pretty much right on that. Okay. So I ain't even gotta worry about that. Let's hang out with Shinjiro, cause I... He's gonna die soon. So... Let's try and get his stuff all out of the way before that happens. Are there any rules about sharing ingredients or dishes, we can use stuff like that? I wanna hear more about the kitchen rules from you, I'll return the favor. Alright. Oh, are you busy? Let's go to the kitchen.
Yeah.
Alright, let's go.
I see. So if there's leftovers, we can keep them in the fridge. But, we're cooking for two today. So there probably won't be leftovers. Oh. I forgot to mention, but I'm making katsu-don. Make sure to eat it all. No matter how it tastes.
Are you fucking creepy? You're making it, only if it tastes good. You're making it?
I said I'd thank you, didn't I? If you don't want it, I could put the meat away. But that's a pain, so just eat it. Alright then. Time to get started. The rice is already cooked. So just scoop everything into a bowl once it's ready. I like extra-large portions, by the way.
I've watched Aragaki cook, his skills on par with that of a professional chef. The katsu-don is ready. Crunchy, flaky, breaded pork topped with half-cooked eggs, I can eat this all day.
Looks like you're a fan, huh? Anyone can make this. Long as they practice. Today, we just had the rice and toppings. But you could add side dishes too. Well... Give it a try when you have time.
Exquisite katsu-don.
Alright. I did my part to thank you. You handle the cleanup. See you around.
Fine, okay. Stick me with the bitch tasks. Sup dude, it's a full moon tomorrow! Hey, is you here? The number of cases around town have gone up like crazy these days! I've heard. There are only four of those large shadows left. Maybe they've gotten desperate? Or maybe the next one is just insanely strong? Oops, my bad! I shouldn't jinx it. Anyway, we can handle this time too.
Yo, Chidori! How's your hand doing? What the... There's no scar! Not even a mark? Maybe it wasn't that bad?
Say, Junpei. What do you do to make yourself feel alive?
What a creepy question! Anyway, that shit...
I dunno. Breathe, I guess? You know, I... Can't say I've ever thought about it. How about you, Chidori? Is that how you feel when you draw?
I dunno. Most of these are just... Scribbles. I don't really... Understand myself.
Oh. Huh. To tell you the truth, there is... One thing that makes me feel alive. It's... When I sort of... Uh... Get to... Play the hero? I guess? In the darkest hour, unknown to all but a few, the chosen ones stand against the forces of evil!
You're telling this to a straga person? That is...
Our hero, Junpei, fights to protect the world from these terrifying monsters!
Oh, I remember what happens here! Oh, this is gonna be funny! Just so you guys know.
Well, you get the idea. That's when I feel most alive. Um... This is the part where you're supposed to laugh.
So... Do you fight all alone?
Hey! I was just kidding around!
You fight during a time that no one is aware of, right? That means... No one knows what you've been doing. So... You're fighting even though you'll never get any recognition for anything. I'm impressed. I guess I misjudged you.
Uh... Really? I... Didn't think you'd actually believe me.
Can you tell me more?
Oh, god!
You know, you're kinda the weird one here. Hmm... I guess it's okay. But you're sworn in secrecy. Got it?
Mhm.
So... There's this special power called a persona. And that's what we use to defeat the monsters. But not everyone can use a persona. That's what I meant by "the chosen ones." My friends are fighting too! And, not to brag, but... We haven't lost a single fight since I joined!
Now that you know about...
Sounds like a lot of fun. If you haven't lost a single fight... That must mean you're really strong.
Yeah... Sorta. I guess you could kinda say I'm the leader. I mean, without me, things would just fall apart.
This becomes very important later on.
I gotta tell everyone what to do and stuff, you know? It's a lot of work being in charge.
So he's like, he's saying like... He's the one in charge. And this is gonna come relevant later on.
Thank you, Junpei. I had a lot of fun today.
Y- you did?
It's time for me to go. I'll see you tomorrow, right?
See you tomorrow, huh?
Mm-hmm! Foreshadowing. That's ended for today. What the heck? I have inspected the entire school, but I did not locate anyone suffering from Addis syndrome. Should I conclude that they are absent? She's still far from passing as human, yeah. Yes, you know. About Korochan? He really does like to die alone at the dorm's front entrance, but it doesn't look, seem like he's just lazing around. Trying to see if he can... Uh, no. Fuck off. I can give a fuck about this shit. I mean, I care about... I care about Mr. Korro. Koromaru. He pretty cool, man. So, not Fuka, I dunno what... Day I can unlock Fuka's social link here, this seems... Okay, I dunno. She's usually on this floor, but I don't know if they moved it in this, I'll have to look it up, how to start it, but... Where's Yuko, man? Goddamn. Fucking... Well, I guess I can... What the hell? "Oh. There's a personal matter I'd like to discuss with you, could you hear me out? But you must keep this a secret from the others. Let's talk in school, you could find me in the first-floor hallway." Okay, so I'm speaking to me, um, let's do, let's see here, stats... So, item equipped, uh, oh yeah, persona. So, term, uh, uh... Hierophant, where are you at? Shisaw! Shisaw! Get outta here! Alright, good. So now we don't need that anymore? We got three more persona slots. Pretty dope. Yeah, we already finished that social link. Okay, Mitsuru.
I'm sorry.
Sorry for the sudden call, I'll keep it brief, I wanted to hand this to you. Mitsuru handed me an envelope, there's some kinda paperwork inside. I'd appreciate it if you could deliver that to Aragaki. Tell him it's from me, he'll know what's inside, a school reinstatement form. "I'm sure you're already aware, but Aragaki is a student at our school, he's currently on a leave of absence. If he's in good health, I believe it is best interest to start attending classes again. But no matter what I, or even Akihiko say to him, he won't have any of it. So I'm changing my approach, perhaps you may be able to get through to him."[1541.62] "Mitsuru seems to need your help. I guess I should accept." "Can I count on you?" Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. "I'm sorry to get you involved in this. I really do apologize for the trouble, but I trust you'll keep this matter confidential. It would only become more difficult to persuade him if this became public. Aragaki is usually at that gathering spot near the station during the day. When you get a chance, could you head on over there and take a look for him? I'm counting on you." Yeah, right? Uh, Port Island Station. Sounds about right. Gathering Spot, yeah, okay. That's prob- probably this down here, I'd say. Yeah, yeah. You again. What do you want? "I found Aragaki. Should I give Aragaki the re-enrollment from Mitsuru entrusted me with?" "You got a bone to pick or something?"
So... What do you want? What's this supposed to be? Why do you have this? Oh... Now I get it. Your ego put you up to this.
She asked me to. You picked up on that fast.
She's tried this a few times already. I knew this envelope looked familiar. Think for yourself for once. Don't just go along with what everyone asks.
I just wanted to help. I'm worried about you too.
Mind your own damn business. Why are you all like this? But I guess you can't. Explains why you've accepted being leader. We done? Then get outta here. Hey. Thanks for going through all that trouble. Maybe I'll... Treat you to a meal sometime.
Alright, I'll take you up on that.